I'd like to call to order this Board of Education regular meeting Tuesday, November 15th, 2025 at 7:01. Can I have a roll call?
Mrs. Mama, Mr. Coljett.
Here.
Billups, here. Erba, Garfield. Mrs. Theodore.
Here.
Mr. Verardi.
Here.
Mr. Fittiposi.
Here. Now they form, let's stand for the final meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of its Constitution, with my nation under God, with the majesty of the Constitution of this country.
Permission statement. Permission of North School District IIR is in primary educational excellence in your curriculum by celebrating the success.
So we're going to start with, this is November. November 15th is Board of Education recognition day. So we're going to start with our celebrated success by celebrating our Board of Education. And thanking our board members for sincerely, we appreciate your work. As we were just talking about, this is an unbreakable position. We volunteer your time and it's not just this once a month meeting, it's reading all the emails and following up and making sure that you are up to date on policy and working together to make this the best school district for the students of North School District A. Your leadership makes a difference. And what you do every day to help our district grow makes a difference. So thank you very much. We have a little gift for you, for all of you, and we do appreciate all that you do for us here in North School District A.
Thank you.
I didn't touch these, so they're good. We're also just going to go into a second thank you today, and this thank you as to both of our assistant principals. We want to recognize Mr. Preble, who was given an award at the Illinois Principals Association back in October, he wasn't at our last meeting, but he was recognized by IPA, which is the Illinois Principals Association in the Lake Region for his service as the State Director for the Lake Region of IPA. He was elected to this position by his peers in the Lake Region after serving as the Lake Region Director. He is no longer obviously in the Lake Region, so he has moved over to the West Cook Region and is currently serving in the West Cook Region Board as a board member at large. So Mr. Preble, we thank you for your service and we are so happy that you have left the Lake Region and are joining us here in West Cook Region. So thank you very much. We realize that the time when we hired you, we had a celebrity. Thank you very much. And also, we want to welcome back Mrs. Gulo. We're excited to welcome her back from her time at home. Picture of Gia here. And today at League was Disney Day, so she's dressed for her. We're grateful to have you back in the building to support our students. We all missed you and we're glad you're back with us. What are our celebrations for tonight?
Very good, thank you. Anything else? Okay. Action item, considered motion to approve the agenda as presented. Can I get the motion?
Motion.
Laurie? Jim? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, it will say no. Motion, kind of say. Your recognition of visitors. Thank you. Any correspondence?
Yes, I actually do have two correspondence tonight. I was, had two things shared with me. I got this little note that came from, I believe it is from Ms. Henderson's class at Child School, fifth and sixth grade art, that says, "We are thankful for you. Thank you for helping us grow." And this beautiful picture. For the Board of Educational level students in New York City. I can pass that around for you to see. And also a certificate from the Illinois Association of School Boards congratulating the North School District A8 and being an active member of the Illinois Association of School Boards. So those two correspondence I've shared with you.
Welcome participation. For your requests, there are three, four. They can be found on the website as published every month. To presentation.
So every year, at the end of October, Illinois School Report Card is published. At that point, we are able to see the growth of the schools in the district and then also compare them to other school districts within Illinois. So as I always do in November, I present to you our report card. Our annual summative designation for both of the schools was commendable. So commendable means the overall performance was not in the top 10% of all schools, but it did have no areas that were underperforming in student groups and was not in the lowest 5% of schools. And if it was a high school, graduation rate of 67%, which we are not. So really, the only difference between exemplary, which is the highest rating, and commendable is exemplary is those same qualifications, except it is the top 10% in the state. So you can't really say you have to get this number to be the top 10% because it changes all the time depending on what the score is. I'll go into that a little bit more when we look into the individual school reports. There are three other areas, targeted support, comprehensive support, and intensive support. We hope to never see those, so I don't even talk much about those. So the Illinois Report Card has two main areas that they pulled information from. Academic indicators, which are the areas that are in the dark blue, and then social quality, I'm sorry, school quality, and student success indicators. So going over the academic indicators, 75% of our report comes from our English language arts growth, our math growth, our English language arts proficiency, our math proficiency, science proficiency, if you have a fifth grade or a seventh grade class taking the assessment, and then our English learners progress to proficiency. I'll go over those in much deeper detail as we go through each school's performance. On the student, the school quality and student success indicators, we're currently only looking at chronic absenteeism, which accounts for 20% of the score, and 5% on the climate survey. That's that survey that comes out every eight of five essentials. The, to get the 5% score in the five essentials, it shows you have to meet the threshold of having families complete it, not be in a certain level of how they grade, but just that they completed. There are some other areas that the state is looking at adding on in the future, however, they haven't done that yet. Things like preschool through second grade, third through eighth, third qualifications on student mental health, and then looking at minors. So here is what we call the house for Giles. Giles was at 72.22 on their overall index score, which is scored, as I mentioned, in commendable. So if you look at ELA proficiency, they were able to score 7.5%, which they did have all of those points in ELA proficiency. Only 6.59% out of the 7.5% points in math proficiency. And ELA growth, 18.54 points out of 25%. Math growth, 12.82% out of 25%. The pink box there is your English language working towards proficiency, 3.65% out of 5%. Chronic absenteeism, which was 13.72% out of 20%. Science proficiency, science is of course tested at Giles, so 4.39% out of 5%. And then they get the full score of the five points for the climate survey because they met the threshold of enough families taking the assessment. So this is kind of interesting, this first time I'm showing you this chart. These were the cutoff scores of where the cutoff was between comprehensive and targeted and exemplary and commendable. So as I mentioned, Giles was 72.22 on their total index score. They would need an 81.99 to be at the exemplary level. So if you look back at those scores, like for example, if you looked at chronic absenteeism and that was up another eight points, then looking at that overall score of 72.22 could make a big difference and could possibly put them into the top 10% of the performing schools, which that would be the exemplary. Do note that commendable is a, something we should be very proud of. It means our students are doing well and they're moving forward, and as we go through the scores, you will see that. Looking at Lee, their overall index score was 73.29. Lee had all of their points on ELA proficiency and math proficiency, and then at about the 16% in ELA growth and math growth. 4.70 with English language learners towards proficiency growth. Chronic absenteeism, 14.94%, and then of course, the climate survey, they also met the threshold of the 5%. So that's a lot of information. What does that all mean? How do we put that together? Before we do that, we'll take a look at where Lee fell in the categories between comprehensive, targeted, and exemplary. Lee was at, as I mentioned, 73.29 on the index score and 81.99 was that break between commendable and exemplary. So again, we're talking about 78 points of a difference between, if they had pulled up those 78 points to get into the exemplary spot. So before we go into individual scores and what happened with IAR for District A8 compared to other school districts with the report card, I want to make sure that the board is aware that this year, Illinois did something that they're calling they right-sized the IAR scores. So what they did is they went in and they looked at the IAR scores compared to all the other states that have an assessment, maybe not necessarily taking IAR, but taking an assessment that is in the same world, same idea as IAR. And what they felt was that they had misaligned with other departments that was also misaligning the students. And in this, they felt that there were students that were actually performing very well in schools, and they gave us examples of actual students that were going on to, you know, high performing colleges that, you know, weren't getting too proficient on IAR. And they were saying, where's the disconnect here? So they felt there was a misalignment in the performance levels. They also felt with that misalignment that the benchmarks were identifying the wrong students who needed additional support or who needed acceleration. And then to add to this confusion, each state assessment had a different number of performance levels with different thresholds. Here, for example, is all of the states with where they were with their proficiency levels. So you can see Illinois was the best and the highest of proficiency level, meaning that if you were taking an assessment in ELA or math in Illinois compared to the National Assessments of Educational Progress, you had to get a higher score in Illinois to be proficient than in any other state. In fact, if you looked down at Virginia down here, it's quite a difference where Virginia was coming in at about 220 in their cutoff scores, and Illinois was about 250 in their cutoff scores. So Illinois right-sized the cutoff scores. Why is this important? Well, it changes how we look at the scores moving forward. It also doesn't allow us to compare apples to apples anymore. So we can't take last year's third graders, for example, and compare where they were in proficiency to this year's third graders or this year's fourth graders because the test goal point moved. So they really redone the cutoff scores. And they have a lot of research. I'm only giving you a very small snippet. If you'd like some more information about this right-size, I certainly can share that with you. But they, what they found was, when they were looking at the levels of SAT and the ISA test and the IAR test, the levels didn't align. The sections of what was emerging, what's developing, what's proficient and what's exemplary went aligning with IAR. So their goal was to make that all align to college and career-ready expectations. So the examples here are the new aligned benchmarks for proficiency. Remember proficiency, there's growth and there's proficiency. Proficiency is how a student masters had targeted learning. So starting in grade three in ELA, their cutoff scores were 750 and all the way through from third grade down to eighth grade for ELA, they now have changed those, but they're actually different in every grade level. And you can see as you go forward, they actually increase from third grade up to eighth grade. So it's not the same level of looking for 750 anymore on all of the third, through eighth grade students. The same look, they made that change in there. Interestingly, when they did this research, they felt that science was actually under where it should be comparing to all the other states in the nation. So when they looked at this National Assessment of Educational Progress for math, I'm sorry, for science, they actually found that Illinois was further down than the rest of the states. So you can see here, the new cutoff scores they actually raised. So they were 799 and they're now 812. So again, we're not comparing apples and apples anymore. It's like 2025 or 2024 results are, are going to be looked at differently now moving forward. We don't expect Illinois to make this change again. They spent months and months and months of research in looking at these cutoff scores and to make this decision to right-size them. So they now have unified performance levels where they're really looking at low proficient, approaching proficient, proficient, and then above proficient. I had mentioned in, I don't think it was last month or the month before, how we were starting to look at our mastery connect. I think I mentioned to you, we're looking at above proficient as an area, and then maybe using these same words moving forward with our scores as well, getting rid of mastery because what's mastery mean? I'm actually proficient and then above proficient, approaching proficient and below proficient. That's something our district is working on right now, and that would be unifying these performance levels. So here's really a very interesting piece of this. The national percentile tiles corresponding to the new Illinois proficiency benchmarks are now putting math at a much higher level than ELA. So what does this mean? This means that students have to perform at a much higher level in math to get proficiency than in ELA. Because as you can see there, especially eighth grade math, needs to be at a 69 percentile in order to be at a proficient level in the new Illinois proficiency benchmarks. Where you can see ELA is staying pretty steady, starting in the 50 percentile in third grade and then ending in the 48th and eighth grade, it's not really even moving that much, but a great deal of difference between 55th percentile and 69th. So what would we expect to see? Well, there are three main things that we would expect to see this year. That there's a significant variation in the rigor across grade levels and subjects for IAR, ranging from the 45th percentile to the 69th percentile, which we just talked about on the last slide. Most districts will see a steady, durable math proficiency from grade three to grade eight because in order to get proficiency in math, you have a higher level of need to get there. And most districts will show significantly higher proficiency in ELA compared to math. So those are the three points to keep in mind, and this is not just for us. These, this is for all of the scores in Illinois when comparing the new right-sized ELA and math and science scores. So what does that mean for us? Well, here is our student proficiency, and remember, proficiency is whether or not students have mastered a common high standard. So think back about the last two months, we've had presentations about standards and mastery connect and meeting standards. So there are standards that are taught in the classroom that then transfer over to the same standards that are tested on IAR. These aren't new standards, they're not new things. These are the same things that we are teaching in the classroom. So here is our overall student proficiency results in ELA. We were 31.6% not proficient and 68.4% proficient. I didn't even pull out last year's scores because they right-sized them this year, so I'm comparing that one to one. So we just need to look at what they are for now and go off of what they can, what they will continue to be as they grow. 68% is a very high percentage. Really proud of this one. Here it is by grade level. The first two points on there, the summary and the grade three through eight are the same, obvious because our district is, has only one building with each of those grades. So we can look at starting at third grade, an ELA would have been 63, fourth grade at 69.2, fifth grade at 63, sixth grade at 68.2, seventh grade at 68.7, and eighth grade at 76.9. We also, I will compare these to the same districts that we have around us that we have been, so that'll help kind of put some, a little more meaning to this too. Looking at our math proficiency, and this is if the students know the standard or not. We were at 44.7 with proficient and 55.3 at math proficient. Do you remember, we expect math scores to, this actually is a higher math score than last year, although that's not fair for me to compare, but we do expect math scores to not be as high as ELA scores because the bar on math scores is significantly higher than in ELA. Here are our math scores. Of course, the principals spent a lot of time with the teams looking through this. Two outstanding grade levels, I would point out here, third and fourth grade, both of them at the mid or high 60s in math, 68.1 for third grade and 66.7 for fourth grade. We do see a decline then in math of fifth through eighth grade. That is something that we are aware of and we do have some plans which I can go through with later in my presentation. I should point out, last year in fifth grade, that was a completely new curriculum. We have changed up fifth grade quite a bit as well this year. Science, we had 53.8% in proficiency and 46.2% in math proficiency. Looking at that, we know we're only talking about fifth and eighth grade, I'm sorry, I think I said seventh earlier, fifth and eighth grade taking science assessment. So science assessment, eighth grade 63.1, fifth grade 42.6. Actually, when we get into comparing these numbers, these numbers are actually very high. Really happy with them. Very well happy with and proud of these scores overall. Now, let's look at our student growth. So student growth percentile describes how much a student grew compared to their academic peers who took the same assessment, who started at the same grade, same subject, with the same score. So if Frank and I were both fifth graders and we had the same score in, in fourth grade, how much did we both grow compared to each other? So we had 51, 52.1% growth in our overall, in our growth for ELA, and 49.2% overall growth for math. Growth is important. It's something we have to look into, or proficiency is definitely something that we look at with a different lens because that is if the student knows the standard or not. But growth is important. Now, comparing student proficiency in ELA, I took the area schools that we commonly are compared to, that are in West 40, that are in our area, that we work with in the Light Norwood Association. I do always have Park Ridge, which is not in West 40, which is not in the Light Norwood Association, but they're close by, we can compare to them left, so I do always put them there. So looking at student proficiency in ELA, Park Ridge came in at 78.6%. Union Ridge is just really slightly above that, 69.8%. And then here at 68.4%. You see the next, the rest of the numbers going down from there. So if I took Park Ridge out of it, we're second in that list, very, very low, a couple of points off from Union Ridge. What is that, six, that stuff, or one point there? Looking at student proficiency in math, we find ourselves in pretty much the same area, Park Ridge being at 68.7, Union Ridge at 51.6, and then here at 44.7. Fourth to, Franklin Park, very, very close, was here at 44.4. And then obviously, you can see the rest of the numbers in the third is in relation. Looking at our science proficiency scores, we were second to Park Ridge on this, in this area, 68.4 for Park Ridge, 53.8 for Norwich, just slightly above Union Ridge, 51.9. I think it helps when you look at them compared to other districts because when you're just looking at a number, you're like, okay, what does that number mean and where does that go from here? So I think these are always valuable areas to look at. Now I'm going to bring us through a couple of areas that, remember when we looked at the house, where those points go into decisions out of your commendable or your exemplary. So comparing our chronic absenteeism, which I really have to commend Mrs. Gulo, who was with us last year as assistant principal, and I know Mr. Preble is working very hard on that this year, on cutting back chronic absenteeism. As you've heard us mention many times, something happened when people came back from COVID and they felt school was a little bit more optional. And, and we have a lot of, a lot of issues with that. So Mrs. Gulo, Mr. Preble stay on top of our families to make sure that we're giving support when needed and also getting kids into school. Our grade set at 9%, chronic absenteeism, Union Ridge and Norwich were tied at 14. I should point out, in this case, I am looking at Elmwood Park as well. Elmwood Park is a unit district, so that is a big difference, so please keep that in mind. So Elmwood Park runs from preschool to high school. That is the only district down here that is a unit district. So you're going to see some differences on absenteeism because a high school absenteeism is different than an elementary school absenteeism, but also you're going to see some financial difference because a high school budget is different than in elementary school. High school salaries are different than elementary school salaries. So please always keep that in mind when you see Elmwood Park included. Other areas that are important to note, student teacher ratios, which you can pull on the student report card as well. Excuse me. Norwich and Elmwood Park coming in both at Norwich and Elwood Park coming in both at nineteen to one on student, well, it's teacher to student ratios, so nineteen students to one teacher. You look down at where Union Ridge is, they're sixteen to one, Park Ridge fourteen to one. Could that make a difference? Yes, sure, okay. Is that an excuse? No, but it is something, the whole package has, we looked at, at least we kept in mind. Rhodes, ten students to one teacher. Now the shift to looking at some financial information, looking at the operating expenses per pupil. This is calculated on how much the school district, on average, spends to educate each student. This is a way to measure how much money is spent on daily operations. This does not include capital funds, so please keep that in mind, there are money in ninety and sixteen capital funds, that's not included. So average spending per student, Rhodes actually tops the average of twenty-seven thousand dollars per student, Mannheim, we now see up on the top, area twenty-one thousand. Union Ridge is seventeen, which is also tied with Norwood, Eric seventeen, and Elwood Park. Schiller Park, River Grove to follow, Norwich District eighty thirteen thousand dollars we spend per student, on average, to educate our students. Looking at teacher salaries, Norwich comes in on the, on the top middle side, Schiller Park leaving the low side of sixty-two thousand seven thirty-five. Park Ridge, average teacher salary is ninety-six thousand nine hundred and forty-three. Norwich average teacher salary is seventy-two nine twenty. Average administrator salaries, Norwich is on the lowest, Rhodes is the highest at one fifty-three, three oh four, Park Ridge is one twenty-nine, four twenty-nine, and then Norwich comes in at one three seventy-two. I thought Elwood Park was a little low, but we do have to remember Elwood Park has so many different levels because of the high school, with the deans and shares, and so you're talking about just a lot more people involved in their administration to be able to be on the high side and also on the low side. I end with, you know, as I mentioned, these scores are not something that we just present to you in November, and then we say, okay, that presentation's done, let's move on. Our grade level teams, our principals, I actually present this to our bulk of the schools, talk to them about our budget that we've passed as well later in the school year. But we, you know, we've also been looking at our school improvement plans, and we have the Child School Improvement Plan that is looking for seventy percent of our students to make their individual growth goal in I Ready Math and I Ready E L A from their fall benchmark to their spring benchmark, and looking for their office discipline referrals to decrease by ten percent from last year. And then we're looking at Lee's, Lee's structured a little bit differently, so please ask questions if you don't understand this one. I ready comes up with a growth goal and then a stretch growth goal. So the growth goal is where you want the student to be in their growth. The stretch growth goal means how much farther we want them to go in their growing, so not just meeting their growth goal, but stretching even further. So Lee saw a great deal of stretch growth last year, so they targeted their growth with seventy-five percent of their students who met their stretch growth last year to meet their stretch goal again for the second time in math and E L A from fall to spring. If you might recall, Dr. Raviola was given an award for I Ready for his growth at Lee and the amount of stretch growth that was at Lee last year. So they are hoping to do that again. Tier three position for their tiered fidelity inventory, which we call a T F I. Right now, their score was zero on where they were for tier three for their T F I. This is their support that they're given for students that are into tier three for social emotional needs. They are hoping that score to be ten out of twenty-six, that's a big focus that they have on their social emotional committees that mean on Wednesday. There is, I mean, I'm going to talk for an hour after this, how much information is available in the Illinois School Report Card and how you can compare it to a plethora of other districts. I usually stay with our districts that are in our Light Norwood township, and then I can throw in Park Ridge, but of course can give you information about any other districts that you might like to see. But again, I want to really reiterate how happy I am with our student proficiency in E L A group. I know we're working on our math growth, I know everyone's math growth is struggling right now, because these scores are not, are higher to achieve. However, that's not an excuse, and I'm not continuing to work on. We have many plans in place, if you go into the actual school plans, lots of different ideas that we're working on in order to bring those up. And Dr. Raviola and Mr. Biacki will provide you with the growth from the winter, comparing fall data to winter data in January, once we have that, I'll come back. Eighth grade is, actually, Childs is going to be taking that, the growth in December. Mr. Biacki has a letter going down to eighth grade parents to make sure that they are aware that that growth is used for placement effort, I believe Thursday.
Thursday at nine AM, it'll be released.
So any questions from Board or Ed? This is in board books, if you ever want to go back and look at it, or if you'd like to speak about it, please let me know.
Onto administrative reports. Mrs. Gusek, anything?
You know what, I do have two real quick things, but I don't want to. Nope. I have a thing in my report.
Special education, Mr. Masters.
Yeah, so I wanted to take the opportunity to kind of look forward as we're ending the trimester, kind of getting some preparation in place. First thing is actually wanting to make a correction to the report that I had made earlier, our December six preschool, I just called cookies and cocoa, it is going to be just proceeding with working, so there's a nice little opportunity to celebrate college before we get into these, but changing the name there. So additionally, we are planning to have our next preschool screening that will happen on December nineteenth, that's a part of the process for when we talk about the preschool for all, so just making sure that we're meeting, they're kind of assessing each child's development as they come into our program. Another upcoming event is going to be our special education day-to-days, and this will be something that we've done through the past several years, and basically looking at all of our students with I D Ps, looking at their goals, seeing how many of them have attained their goals, and if they have not, what are we going to do in response to that to help them continue to maintain their growth. So that will be coming up after the hangout of Thanksgiving holiday. And the last thing is, just as a future reference, on April seventh, we will be having our next special education parent night, that is focusing on social work and social emotional and behavioral support, so we encourage anybody who's interested to study that, we'd love to see.
Building reports, Child School, Mr. Biacki.
First of all, I'd like to thank each of you as board members for all your support for us at Child School, we really do appreciate it, we appreciate all the time and work you put into your roles, so thank you. If you're at Child School, hopefully you get a chance to kind of walk through, we've completed our first phase, our stairs that go up to the seventh and eighth grade wing, there's twenty-two steps, all have now our pride, positive, respectful, responsible, inclusive, determined, engaged, and then positive quotes for our students to read as they're walking up those stairs. Also, I'd like to report that the athletic pickup and drop-off has been moved to Column Avenue, entrance three, seems to be going really well, I communicated with Conway Bus Company to make sure they are aware of that change, and I communicated with all of the coaches at Childs and make sure they're aware of it. So far, it's only affected girls volleyball, because they're still in season, it seems to be going really well. Then to leave my report.
B-School, Dr. Raviola.
Thank you. I'd like to start by congratulating our third graders, who had the best attendance for the second month in a row. So our third grade was able to lead off the Halloween parade, that was the incentive for the month of October. Our culture and climate committee put together different incentives for each month, and we also, Mr. Preble, made sure to check the attendance on a week-by-week basis, we have a psychology board that's set up, so as students come into the building, they see who's in the lead and how things are looking each week, so we have really been trying to focus on that attendance, like Mrs. Gusek shared with the Illinois School Report Card, you know, five of the points out of those seven that would get us the exemplary are those chronic absenteeism. And I know it can somewhat seem annoying to get those emails and reminders about attendance, but there is a reason why we're doing that and making sure that we're supporting all of our students with their attendance. And another note, just want to put out there, we are going to have our middle-year assessments coming up right after Thanksgiving break, so want to make sure everyone is aware of that, I'll be putting that in the tracks on Friday, just a reminder about that, and then once we have that data, we'll be looking at that before winter break, the plans for our tier two and tier three interventions, that'll start up after the new year. Kind of seems crazy, we talked about that already, but we're already in that phase, so that concludes my report.
Two, discipline reports, Childs, Mrs. Gulo.
We have three students with their first offense and school suspensions for violating policy seven colon one ninety, number nine, eleven, and twenty-three. And then we have one student first offense and school suspension for violating policy seven colon one ninety, number twenty-three. And lastly, one student second offense and school suspension for violating policy seven colon one ninety, number eleven, and number twenty-three. And that concludes the report.
You. Lee, Mr. Preble.
Lee has no behavioral report this month.
Onto board committees, education, nothing to report this month, board policy development, the committee has a meeting December second, reviewing the seven hundreds, as we all know. Our discipline reports are ninety percent of the time, something in the sense of seven hundreds policies.
Tonight, you also have one twenty front press, and the little snippet page, the town thing that's about, and then the actual language that is being suggested, a lot of the committee looking into that as well, but anyone else that wants to read that, we'd love hearing that as well.
Building grounds, next month, Gordy Wold, the new architectural firm, we take on, they will be presenting, like, you know?
It's a facilities plan.
Facility, yeah. Behavior intervention, nothing to report, negotiations with human resources, nothing to report. Finance, I'd like to call, can you board, if you'd like to take the floor on this?
Ready? Yeah. Okay, so you all have a copy of the presentation, too, because sometimes I know the numbers are kind of hard to see on the board.
A lot of places to work.
The first thing we're going to look at are the fund balances, and this is the same process we go through with the budget. The fund balances really guide many of the decisions we make in the business office, or just like when we're creating the budget, we need to look at the fund balances, when we're creating the levy, we need to look at the fund balances, because we need to know how much money we have, where we have it, and where we need money. As of October, our fund balances were just about six point three million total, if you look, and at the end of June, they were about nine point seven. The reason there's such a difference is because we haven't received any of the fall tax dollars, so we've been spending money without getting any money back to replenish it. Some of our fund balances, if you look at TORT, TORT has a very small fund balance, but that's not a place that we're going to do a resolution today, and that's okay, because out of TORT, we pay two bills once a year, we won't have to pay those bills again until next July and next September. By then, we'll get this fall collection of tax dollars, we'll get the spring collection, and we'll be fine. Education and transportation, that's where we're going to look at our resolution later, because that's where we're lower on fund balances after we pay the November bills. And then, if you go on to our next sheet, this is Public Act one oh three, three ninety-four, we also looked at this during the budget, we're going to look at it again, it's almost exactly the same, there's some slight differences from the numbers we got from the draft A F R, but we are still well below the two point five time ratio we would need. So what this public act says is that if you have a cash reserve balance in just the ed fund, operation and maintenance fund, that is two and a half times your average expenditures over three years, then you would need to do a fund balance reduction. We are well below that, we don't have to worry about doing it, but one of the reasons you would need to look at it during the levy again is because if we were at that, it might change what we levy or how we levy. If we had two point five times in our operating funds, we might not need to levy that much into them, but that's not a problem we have. This worksheet is what we use to create and test the levy. So on this sheet, there's a lot of information that comes, some comes from the county and some comes from us. If you look at the very top towards the left, you're going to see it has the consumer price index on there, which is two point nine. So two point nine is what we will get, and then it has our E A V. So on your tax bill, you'll see what your E A V is. So this amount that's on here, the actual total E A V, is what our E A V is for the whole district, for every body that pays taxes, what is the total E A V. So you can look at what your E A V is and compare it to that E A V and see how big of a piece of the pie you are, because if your E A V, if you look at it year over year, goes up, but our E A V doesn't go up, that might be a reason why you would see that your tax bill went up more, because you became a bigger piece of that total pie. Then we have what's the estimated, like, what do we think we might change next year? So we put a percentage in there, and then we put an amount for our estimated new property, because two point nine is C P I, so that's all the new money we're going to get, except for the amount that we get from new property. Usually, the amount that is, like, the E A V of new property could be around two million, three million. This year was eight hundred thousand, in a couple previous years, it was nine million. So we never really know, we don't have a way to know. So the reason I put five million in there is to test it, because on this sheet is where we put things to test it, because if I put in a hundred million, then I'm probably under levy, so I wanted to put in some realistic amounts. And so once we put in all those factors, we put in the existing extension. So if you guys remember from the past, we've talked about the levy, there's three parts of it. There's the levy, the levy is the ask, what am I asking the county for, how much money am I asking them to give me? Then there's the extension, so no matter what I ask Then, there's the extension. So, no matter what I ask for, that's not necessarily what I'm going to get. The extension is how much the county says this is what you're actually going to get. And then, there's a third word, which is collection. So, even if my extension, which from the 2024 levy comes out to 11.1 million, then there's actual collection. How much of that are we actually going to collect? Which we do usually collect about 95%. So, on this sheet, there's a lot of, like I said, those different factors that go in. So, we put the prior year extension, we put all the CPI, the EAV, all of that, and then we start creating the levy. So, if you look in the green column, that's where we put the amount for the actual levy, how much we need. So, for every fund, except for the ed fund, I put in how much money we need. Then, whatever's left, we put into the ed fund. So, when I create this levy, we know that we're going to get 2.9% CPI plus new construction. But if we go over 5%, then we have to go over through the truth and taxation process, which we don't want to go through that process. So, what we do is we go up as high as we can without going up to the 5% and then we adjust down from there. So, we put in everything we need in every other fund, and then we put as much as we possibly can into the ed fund to stay under that 5%. So, if you look at this sheet, for the cap levy, which means all of our funds except for the bond, it has a 4.92% increase. Because the bond, the county actually puts the amount that we need to make our bond payment in. We only have one bond. We have a small bond payment. It's 136,000 next year, is what I'm estimating that they're going to put in. So, that is a very small amount that we have in our bond and levy fund. So, once you put that in, it's actually a decrease. So, the total levy comes out to 4.82% of an increase. On the next slide, that, this is what Sorry, I just tried to show them. This sheet is what actually the levy looks like. So, this is what we then send to the county. We use that worksheet to put everything in, to test it, to make sure that it's an okay levy. And then, what comes out is this levy in front of you. And then, on my last slide. On here, this is a clear presentation of all of that information. So, the 2024 tax extension, our total of our cap funds, so all of our funds except for their bond fund, came out to around 11.1 million. Then, with the bond, it's about 11.3. The draft levy that we created for the cap funds is a 4.92% increase. And then, once you include the bond payment overall, it's 11.8 million, which is a 4.82% increase. The final column that I have here is our projected extension. So, what do I think that we're actually going to get? Even though we're asking for a 4.92% increase, how much are we actually going to get? Probably a 3.3% increase. All of the amounts will stay the same, because we will ask the county to leave every amount the same and only reduce the ed fund, because that's where we put all of the extra money. So, the ed fund that I'm asking for 9.7 million will probably get about 9.5. Last year, when we did the levy process, when we, we projected that we would actually get a 3.75% increase, but when we actually got the extension, we got a 3.55% increase. And so, we were, the projection for what we actually got was off about 21,000. So, the projections are usually pretty close to what we actually get. So, even though we're ballooning our levy to make sure we capture all that new construction, we're not, we don't know how much we're going to get, and we're asking for a 4.92% increase, most likely, we will get a 3.3. Is anyone in question?
So, this is the tentative levy. We happen to have an extra weekend today to pass this. Mrs. DeBora will continue to look at it, check it over, and then in December, we would have to pass the final. Not expecting new changes, really, but we do have some time to go final.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. For committees, communications, nothing to report. North Park District, nothing to report. Two discussion items.
Okay. Okay. Just give you a little update. The Superintendent Advisory Committee, our November meeting actually met the last week of October, due to my absence, and the group was great. But then, we focused on our local, state, and federal school district finances. So, we talked about what money do we get from local sources, what money do we get from state sources, what do we get in federal sources. I think it was a great meeting. Wonderful. We have a couple new members this year. They've been giving some wonderful feedback. We also took a nice little tour of Lee from anyone who wanted to stay for that. We are meeting December 8th, and I'm going to be talking to them about this report and data that I shared with you today. We're also going to be meeting over at Giles. Substitute pay. I have been communicating with you that the districts around us have increased their substitute pay, which is great. However, it does cause us to lose substitutes, because if somebody can get paid $20 more down the street, they're going to go do that. So, I am proposing today that the board take action and consent on a increase in the substitute pay. We have an increased substitute pay, gosh, I can't tell you exactly when. Not since I've been sitting in this seat. So, I'm proposing $160 for a teacher. This is the first time we actually are proposing a separate amount for a paraprofessional substitute. So, if someone comes in and they're going to be a paraprofessional for the day, which obviously is a little bit different in their role, then we would stick with the 140. And then, if one of our district paraprofessionals substitutes a teacher, we, of course, would bring them up to the $160 amount, because that would be fair to them. So, that would be adding $3 onto their hourly of our, because many of our paraprofessionals can substitute and can, because they have self-certificates or actually, some of them have teacher certificates. So, I am asking the board to take action on this tonight. Also on the agenda tonight is an intergovernmental agreement with the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission. This has been in effect since 1996. I believe we've been partnered with them since then. Several five-year agreements. So, the current agreement ends December 31st of 2025. We would enter into another five-year agreement with them December 31st of 2030. So, about every month, we have a meeting, and I sit on this board to look at, well, we look at a lot of things. We look at how many planes are coming in, what different rampages it will have, and what kind of noise complaints and or changes have been made. Excuse me. So, we would like to continue this for another three, five years. Tonight, we have two resolutions that the board is going to, has to take action on. The first is a loan for working cash to the educational fund for $1.5 million. And the second is a loan for working cash to transportation for $15,000. Now, we've talked about this quite a bit the last few months, since taxes, the cookout and tax bills have gone out. Thank goodness, please pay taxes, so we can start getting some of that money. And once that money does come in, we'll be able to move the money back to the working cash fund. However, right now, we temporarily need to file for our jobs. We have about $2.9 million in working cash currently. Okay. Yesterday, Derek Sellers and I met at the Village to follow up on the items you wanted me to speak with them about. We had a couple of new things. We looked again at lighting at both buildings. One of the suggestions that they came up with is, apparently in Chicago, they're doing this double light system, where they have a street light, but then they also have a lower light that comes out just to light up the sidewalk, walk area, on the same pole. So, they felt that if we did that on Oriole and then did this over here, did the same thing over here on Portland, we would actually be able to lighten up that area on Oriole and bring more light down, not to the houses on Oriole, which is down to the street, the walkways where the kids are, and then also to the parking lot area here at Lee. So, they are looking into that. That would require them to change out the poles. So, I don't imagine this will happen overnight, but they are just willing to look into it. We talked about opening up three different areas outside of Lee here as school permit parking. Currently, those areas are no parking, standing, stopping areas. So, they're not currently areas where people who live in the area can park now. But in those three areas, we measured out, we could get about nine Lee School staff parking spots. So, that would require a little change with the cleaning of the road schedule and then new So, they are working on that. They're supposed to get us some, some new sample sign up soon. We also discussed at Giles, the sport support. However, looking at all of the options, the bill has really agreed that moving the sport over to Column, as Mr. Bietke spoke about, really is the safest thing to do. And then, the last two areas, we talked about flashing stop signs at Giles. This is my last slide. And speed indicators, and then a visitor parking spot at Giles. Buildings and grounds, Thanksgiving break, we're finishing some painting and
And we have our third grade hallway and our fourth grade hallway that still need to be painted, so they're going to start working on some of that.
Thank you, Dr. Revio.
Just give you a little bit of a breeze right there.
Especially because I could have taught. We had a water pipe made that's coming into Giles in the south part, right? There's a hole in it. This is made on our property. The Village, we are working with the company that works for the Village, so the Village has been supportive of us. This is on our property at Giles, so we are looking at fixing that. It's about four feet down. We already took it. We see it. That's about an $8,000 fix over at Giles. We started seeing some pooling of some water, realized something must be going on there in the south side of the building. That is by the gym. So, this also will be fixed over Thanksgiving. Once we have tabs for stuff. It's about $1,000. One thing I also wanted to bring to your attention, that currently, we only have 16 students signed up for Washington DC with two parent chef rooms, if we're bringing them on to District AD staff, which would only be 20 individuals, much lower than we had in the past. One of the things we might want to consider, which Noyer does, is they do an every-other-year trip, every-other-year, one to the seventh and eighth grade, go to Springfield. Then, next year, the seventh and eighth grade, whoever not to, of course, go to Washington. This might be something that we might consider if our numbers continue to go down. The issue, of course, is as you bring less people, the price goes up. So, I don't think we, I think it's too late to consider that for this year, but that could be something bad in the future. It is something that Noyer does. They do it quite successfully. They usually have about 45 kids at DC, and that's a mixture of seventh and eighth grade every year. And then, the next year, seventh and eighth grade go to Springfield. So, just something we should consider. And that's my report. Very sorry.
Thank you very much.
I think I'm done talking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Consent agenda. I need a motion to approve 15A through 15D. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Fanning?
Second.
Lauren? I need discussion. I need this. Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. A full say aye. Motion passes. Action items. 16A, consider motion to approve the adoption of resolution authorizing loan from the working cash fund into the educational fund. 16B, consider motion to approve the adoption of resolution authorizing loan from the working cash fund into the transportation fund. 16C, consider motion to approve the 2025 tentative levy. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Amanda, Fanning? I need discussion. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Phillips? Yes. Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Puljar?
Yes.
Mrs. Urbah Barfield?
Yes.
Mr. Burardi?
Yes.
Mr. Kupuziu?
Yes. The motion passes. And any board comments? Okay, I will need a motion to adjourn the closed session to consider, to, I'm sorry, to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and review of closed session minutes. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Time's up. Lauren? Roll call, please.
Sorry, that was rental Lauren. Mr. Burardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Urbah Barfield?
Yes.
Mr. Puljar?
Yes.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Kupuziu?
Yes.
Mr. Kupuziu?
Yes. The motion passes. We will meet closed session at 8:00 a.m. now. We will meet at Just that very 15. We are now back in open session at 10:19. To 19 personal action items. Day resignation. Consider acceptance of resignation from Yuna Sevaj, District Fair Professional, 1980. To consider acceptance of resignation from Rhea Shorn, Southern A grade, LA teacher. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Amanda, Fanning, roll call, please.
Mrs. McPhillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Theodore?
Yes.
Mr. Puljar?
Yes.
Mrs. Urbah Barfield?
Yes.
Mr. Burardi?
Yes.
Mr. Kupuziu?
Yes. Motion passes. I need a motion to adjourn this meeting at 10:20. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say aye. Meeting is not adjourned.